So I've been asked to moderate this portion of our devotional, and we're going to have a few questions and answers. And just so you know, these questions are based on a survey of our whole university community and some of the key topics that were on their minds. And after I ask a question, I will step back, and we'll just enjoy the opportunity to hear from our wonderful guests about their experiences and testimony and perspective on these. So the first question is that Elder Holland taught us recently that we should be joyful, that we should take Christ at His word about being of good cheer. In the most recent General Conference, President Nelson asked us to increase our faith and yoke ourselves to Jesus Christ to overcome the world. So there's some context. The question is, are there any specifics that you can share with us about what we can be doing to be more joyful and seek to overcome the world, and find the peace and the confidence, the joy and the rest that President Nelson has promised us?
Beautiful.
Can I say a word? This reminded me, this matter of being joyful or not being joyful, of something President Nelson said in his masterful address at General Conference in October. You all remember it, I hope, and have studied it. As he came out of the conference center after giving that talk, I shook his hand and said, "President, that was a masterpiece." And he gave me that little smile like, "I just do what I'm told." But I want to quote this one thing he said, "I grieve for those who leave the Church because they feel membership requires too much of them. They've not yet discovered that making and keeping covenants actually makes life easier. Each person who makes covenants has increased access to the power of Jesus Christ." For me, that's the source of joy, and President Nelson had remarked about that some years earlier, but joy is not a matter of our circumstances, but of our focus. And if the focus is on Christ and we're linked with Him by covenants, joy is the product. It doesn't mean there aren't challenges and moments of sadness, but in the end, there's that comfort and peace of knowing that we're with Him, and He's with us, and it all turns out right because He's overcome all things. And so He said to His apostles, "Be of good cheer. In the world you'll have tribulation, but be of good cheer. I have overcome the world." So to me, as long as we're with Him, joy is the product.
Thank you. President Johnson, do you have any thoughts?
I'd be happy to respond. If you'll read that taught carefully, "Overcoming the World," President Nelson, at the very beginning, expresses his love for each one of us. And he goes on to explain that our Heavenly Father and our Savior, Jesus Christ, love us, not collectively, but individually. And then he used a really key word, at least it was key to me, it stood out at the time he said it, "Knowing of their love for you is vital." He said it was vital that we know of the love that our Heavenly Father and our Savior have for us, and then it's easier to stay yoked to them through our covenants as we understand the love that they have for us. So I'll tell you what I have done in response to President Nelson's invitation, and that is, I have tried to be more deliberate about looking for the love of my Heavenly Father and my Savior. I prayed for the capacity to see it, and it's everywhere. And when I go looking for the love of my Savior, I see it in the beautiful sky this morning here on the island as the sun came up, and I see it in your faces. I recognize that as evidence of the love of my Heavenly Father and my Savior for me, and that has made me more joyful.
Well, you're in Hawaii. How can you not be joyful? Any other comment?
Maybe this is very close to what Elder Christopherson was talking about, but one of the keys that President Nelson talked about in that address was that our covenants give us power, that the power to overcome the world is because of our covenants and keeping our covenants. And I think one of the challenges with feeling joy is sometimes we feel anxious or worried or that we're not going to be good enough to accomplish this. And I think realizing that when we keep our covenants, we tap into the power of God, and it makes these things possible, this going forward and accomplishing what He wants us to accomplish.
Well, thank you. So the next question we have is related in a sense. So we love President Nelson, and we love the messages he shared, and we can sense there's a theme, a consistent theme as he goes. Which recent message from President Nelson has resonated with you personally? And maybe can you share an experience about a blessing from acting on that message?
I think that's okay. I'm going to take you back to April 2018. It was the first talk he gave when he was our new prophet, had just recently been set apart in that capacity. And he invited us to seek personal revelation. In fact, he said it would be nearly impossible for us to survive spiritually without the blessing of the Holy Ghost to guide us and direct us and comfort us. That resonated with me then, but especially when I was serving in primary, because I thought more deliberately about how we would go about teaching primary children about how the Holy Ghost feels to them. And I realized that that was a lesson, not just for children, but for all of us. I think oftentimes in primary, we teach the children about the Holy Ghost being a comforter, and that's certainly a role that the Holy Ghost plays, the Holy Ghost comforts. But the Holy Ghost, I've learned, speaks to me in ways other than as a comfort. So when the Holy Ghost is confirming truth, I feel comfortable. But the Holy Ghost also prompts me to do things, sometimes things that I don't want to do. And because I'm looking and more sensitive to that, to the promptings, I'm understanding better how the Holy Ghost speaks to me and works through me. And thankfully, the Holy Ghost is persistent with me as I've been learning how the Holy Ghost speaks to me. That lesson from President Nelson and that invitation to understand better how the Holy Ghost communicates with me has made a big difference for me and given me more confidence that I'm on the Lawrence Aron.
Thank you.
If I could add a corollary there, I hope you do recognize that President Nelson has remarked about personal revelation more than once, and that he returns to that theme from time to time, even saying to us, "Do whatever is necessary, that you can connect with heaven and learn to receive inspiration and answers to prayer and revelation." And one of the things he says is, "When it comes, when you have promptings, when the Holy Ghost speaks, when you get the feelings, make a record of it, write it down, make a note, keep it where you can remember it. And don't just say, 'Well, that was nice, and maybe you remember, maybe you don't.' If you treat it as precious, then more will come." And that's the example, I mean, he sets the example. He talks to us from time to time about having a notepad and by his bedside, and if a prompting comes at night, then he writes it down. I was visiting a family in Idaho a while ago, and one of the boys, a 15-year-old, had a hobby of making pens. He had a lathe, and he would create these pens out of wood or other substances and give them as gifts. And he gave me one to give to President Nelson as a gift. It was all white. I don't know what it was made of, but he said, "He'll like this one because it glows in the dark." And when he gets the impression, he'll know where to find his pen. But could I say one other thing about one of the favorite comments that I recall was in his opening remarks in this last conference. It wasn't the main address, and sometimes we kind of pass over those welcoming remarks, but he said something pretty profound, I thought, there. He said, "Some would have us believe that truth is relative, that each person should determine for himself or herself what is true. Such a belief is but wishful thinking for those who mistakenly think they will not be accountable to God." That's a lot of profound understanding in that comment. But truth is truth. And he said, "God is the source of all truth. The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints embraces all truth, whether learned in scientific laboratory or received by direct revelation from Him. Please take notes of what you hear so they stay in your mind and heart, and ask the Lord to confirm that what you've heard is true." I think in a university setting especially, we want to know the truth and live by the truth. And that is done by being and feeling and acting accountable to God, the source of truth, for our decisions, for what we do in life and don't do.
You know, I would add, I love President Nelson's talks. It's hard to pick a favorite one. And Elder Christopherson mentioned to you that President Nelson has talked about revelation multiple times. He's talked about covenants multiple times. And if you want to follow the prophet, look at when he repeats something and pay particular attention when he pleads with you. And we saw that in this last talk at General Conference, in the talk, "Overcome the World." He repeated a talk he gave to all of you last May, and that may be my favorite talk. It's the talk, "Choices for Eternity." And both in General Conference and in the talk, "Choices for Eternity," he said to the Church and then earlier to each of the young adults of the Church, "I plead with you to take charge of your testimony." The fact that he repeated that and he talked about care for it, nourish it, and this important charge from the prophet, that a testimony just doesn't happen to you, you need to reach for it and cultivate it and strive for it. I loved the talk, "Choices for Eternity." Of course, his messages in that talk about identity as children of God, children of the covenant, and disciples of Jesus Christ has been so profound. But in that talk, and then again in General Conference, he repeated that talk almost word for word with his plea to all of us to take charge of our testimonies.
One that has been a real challenge to fully incorporate in my life has been his, "Let God prevail." That just seems like graduate work for me in the gospel, and it's allowing our will to be swallowed up in the will of the Father. And I've noticed, as I've thought about this and pondered it, I've noticed how there are so many times when I pray, and it seems like I'm trying to convince God to use His power to accomplish my will, rather than trying to bend my will, to allow my will to be subject to God's will, to align my will with His, and to focus my efforts to help Him get His work done, rather than focus my energies on trying to convince Him to do what I want to have done. And honestly, that is a challenge for me. But it's just such a profound thought from that message from Him that I think is a lifelong effort, at least for somebody like me. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. Well, we talked about trying to be disciples of Christ and embracing that identity. Elder Gilbert talked about that. And that phrase, "Being a lifelong disciple of Jesus Christ," is central to the mission of the Church Educational System and all of the institutions that compose it. So the questions we have here is, what is President Nelson and the board's direction and vision for the Church Educational System? And specifically, excuse me, how does BYU Hawaii fit into that plan?
Why don't you start?
Right. We love BYU Hawaii, and it's amazing to be part of the Church Educational System. Across all of our schools, we encourage students to become disciples of Jesus Christ, who can be leaders in their homes, the Church, and in their communities. And as we counsel with President Nelson about what to do in the Church Educational System, he reminds us that education is a spiritual responsibility, but he's also said it's a personal responsibility. And as you look at that, that puts a lot of responsibility on you to take charge of your education. And it also means if we're going to spend the resources and provide the funding from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in places like Laiai, Hawaii, or Provo, or Rexburg, or Salt Lake, or all around the world with BYU Pathway and seminaries and institutes, it has to meet that purpose. I hope you're taking a chance today to realize that you have an apostle on this campus. He said something yesterday that stuck with me this whole trip. He said, "The more I progress in my life, I realize I have one responsibility, and that's to be a witness of Jesus Christ." It was just a passing comment in part of our meetings yesterday, but it's resonated with me. That's his calling, it's the calling of our prophet. But when we look at our universities, we want you to develop in your careers, we want you to make friendships. But I think President Nelson, if he could give us a reminder, there is one central responsibilities of these schools, including the one you're at, and it's to develop yourselves into disciples of Jesus Christ. Don't come here and just get a career preparation and a degree and make some wonderful friends in a beautiful place, but use your time to become something totally different in Jesus Christ. BYU Hawaii has a focus on Asia, Asia North, the Pacific area, and the Philippines, four areas of the Church that are really central to the future of the Church. But more than that, it's our time here to become disciples of Jesus Christ. And as I watch and observe our prophet, I feel like He wants us to keep that central in everything we do.
I agree. It is our deepest desire that people would be able to see in you as you go through the years ahead, something of Jesus Christ, in your words, in the way you act, in the way you dress even, just all the aspects of your life and character. They ought to be able to see something of His image, something of Him and the kind of person He is and was, a bit of the Savior as His disciple, as you've said. And one of those aspects of discipleship, we mentioned in a small group of students yesterday, is that this wonderful education and preparation that you're receiving, that you're investing in, has or is not an end in itself, but it's a means to a greater end of blessing others, blessing people in your homeland, blessing your own family, blessing all those around you in different ways. But you're intended to use this wonderful blessing and tool as a tool to make a difference in other people's lives, just as the Savior did.
Maybe I'd just make a quick comment here. One good way to get a sense for what the vision is of the future of the institution is watch President Coway and the people that work closely with him. He's in the meetings with the Board of Trustees for the institution. Plus, they have spent so much time on their knees and counseling together on where do we go with this institution. I just think that's a pretty good place to get a touchstone of where you're headed.
Excellent.
I think President Coway would be embarrassed if we said this, but--
Go ahead.
President Nelson loves your president. And he has a lot of confidence in him and confidence in the direction he's leading this university. And so we would just echo that, that we are grateful for you, President, and for your ability to listen to the prophet and take this university where he would have it go.
And your wonderful companion.
Yeah. Keep her.
She keeps us all going the right direction. That is embarrassing. I think, I'll just interject as a moderator, I mean, what we're trying to do is follow the direction that's come from our Heavenly Father, from our Savior, Jesus Christ, through His leaders as precisely as we possibly can. And I'm grateful that that has continued to create confidence and a desire to move forward because this university and its mission are absolutely miraculous, and they bring so much joy to the world. They bring the joy of Christ and the gospel to the world in an amazing way, so grateful for that. I think this will probably be our last question, and we are really blessed here in Laiai to have a temple, right? It's part of the university essentially, right? And we know that President Nelson has encouraged us to use the temple and access the blessings of the temple more. What advice do you have for our students on how they can make their worship of the Savior through the temple a more meaningful and more valuable and more frequent part of their lives?
I've been looking for the Savior in the temple every time I go. And each time I go, deliberate in looking for Him, I find Him in places I didn't, He's there. It's in everything we do and what we say, the clothes that we're wearing, if we're deliberate about looking for the Savior in our temple experience. It's the house of the Lord. It's His house. And we've all heard that description. The house is beautiful, but it really is the box. It's the pearl inside that we're aiming for. The pearl is our Savior, Jesus Christ. And I stand behind everything that President Nelson said, but I know to be true what he said about, "If you're not, if you don't love going to the temple, go more." Absolutely positively true. Keep going, keep going and look for the Savior, and I know that you will find Him there.
President, I'm really excited about this lay because I think I can wear it in the temple. It's white, close enough, huh? I appreciate that comment. And I would just add my own thought that we learn and draw near to the Savior in His house at our own speed individually. It's interesting, we're there together as a diverse group, if we're in a temple session or even doing baptisms, all hearing the same thing, but each of us is developing and progressing and deepening our conversion and discipleship based on our own preparation and where we are and what we're open to receive. It's a little like why the Savior taught sometimes in parables, I think. He teaches at times in symbols in the temple. With parables, people would understand whatever they were ready to get, whatever they were ready to understand. For some, it was just a little story. Others saw some deeper meaning, you know, the seed is the gospel, the soil is the person, and so on. And others saw even deeper meanings as they were prepared, as they had progressed spiritually. So the parable could teach everybody at the same time, but at different levels. And so in the temple, and we can all progress as we choose, and we ought to be patient but diligent and recognize that the Lord will speak to us as fast and as much as we're ready as we go along.
You know, Sister Johnson quoted another one of our favorite talks just a minute ago, "The Temple and Your Spiritual Foundation," from President Nelson. In that talk, and she talked, Sister Johnson talked about the box and the pearl inside the box. In that talk, President Nelson showed us the reconstruction of the Salt Lake Temple, and he said, "When this temple's completed, if there's an earthquake in this valley in Salt Lake, the safest place to be will be in this temple." And then he said, "Likewise, in the coming days, as the pressures of the world mount upon us..." And I would have thought he was going to say, "The safest place is to be in the temple." But he added a phrase, which was, "The safest place is to be living in our covenants that we make in the temple." And as you think about your worship here, you can go to the temple and receive revelation, you can go to the temple and feel closer to the Savior, but above all, you're reminded of the covenants you made in the temple, and in the coming days, they will be your protection. So not only do you have a physical temple, but it's an opportunity to renew covenants.
Well, thank you. We are now going to think a lot about this great discussion we've had and things we've learned. I've been taking some notes for myself. As we prepare to close, I'm going to go ahead and announce the balance of our meeting. So Elder Christopherson will address us, and after his remarks, we will then watch and listen to a musical number, "Behold the Wounds in Jesus' Hands." And this was performed by a combined choir from Brigham Young University in the October 2021 General Conference. After that musical number, we'll then have a benediction offered by a Kaveh Tarahiti, a freshman from the Gold Coast in Australia, who served a mission in the Australia Adelaide Mission. Following that benediction, we request that all of you remain seated as our guests depart. So Elder Christopherson, the time is now yours.
Thank you. I'll use the podium. I'm very grateful to my Heavenly Father for the privilege of being with you today in these last day and a half. I express again the love and regard and greeting of both President Nelson and Elder Holland, who was going to be here and was unable to come. He does send his love, and he very much loves this university, your president, and his companion, and those who work so closely with him, and the faculty, all the rest. It's a wonderful place to be, even in summer, let alone January. But I want you to understand the affection, the deep and sincere affection we feel, born of the Spirit, for you and your desires, your goals, the things you're trying to accomplish, the way you're of service to one another and lift each other up and unite in fellowship across cultures and geography and all the rest. You are an example, a great example to us and to the whole Church. And we are so grateful every time we have a chance to be among you. I hope you'll give a warm welcome to Elder Suarez when he comes. Is it this Sunday, did you say, President? I don't know what he did to earn a trip here. He's the junior member of the 12, I mean, you know. Usually I have to wait till you're about in the middle, you know, before you can come. But he's a man I deeply admire and greatly love, and you'll have a wonderful experience with him. I want to say just a word as we conclude about covenants again. The Abrahamic covenant is something that President Nelson has spoken about, studied and spoken about forever. And you recall these covenants have to do with posterity and with property. And you recall, these covenants have to do with posterity and with property and with priesthood. And all of these things were promised to Abraham as the friend of God, his chosen servant to bring about on the earth a chosen people, a covenant people, to bless the whole earth as the yeast or the leaven in the loaf, to bless everyone. And yet, Abraham had reason, or could have doubted a little bit, about the Lord's ability and willingness to fulfill His covenant or these promises. He's promised land, and he has to leave it as soon as he gets there because of a famine and go to Egypt. He's promised this posterity as numerous as the stars in the heavens, and his wife is taken from him when he gets there because she's so beautiful, the ruler wants to have That gets resolved, but then poor Abraham, once he finally has a covenant son, is commanded to sacrifice him. All of these things you think might have caused him to doubt, but in reality, they were the things that strengthened his faith. And our trials and difficulties as a covenant child of God, as members of the covenant, if you will, we ought to look at our own traumas and trials that come from time to time to everyone as opportunities in which the Lord will prove to us how faithful He is. We want to be faithful in our promises and in keeping our covenants with Him, yes, but He also wants to show us that we can have faith in Him, can count on Him, that He will fulfill His promises to us. And that becomes evident when we're facing trials and challenges, when He can intervene in our lives and preserve the covenant and the promises in us. So, as you face issues, as you go through life from time to time, and you may wonder for a moment if the Lord remembers you, if He hears your prayers, if He remembers His covenant promise to you, as the same promise as He gave to Abraham, just remember, if you'll turn to Him, He will prove to you that He is faithful, that He keeps His covenants. I bear witness to you that God is our Father, that His holy Son, Jesus, who has made these covenants possible, has all power in heaven and earth and can fulfill everything He has said and will and does, and His resurrection is conclusive evidence of that fact. I asked if we could hear this hymn as our closing hymn that was sung by the choir in 2021, I recall. It's not one that's in the hymn book, but it's called "Behold the Wounds in Jesus' Hands." I'll read you just a couple of the verses from that hymn. "Behold the wounds in Jesus' hands, the mark upon His side, and ponder who He meant to save when on the cross He died. We cannot see the love of God, which saves us from the fall, yet we know that Christ, of wood and nails, built mansions for us all. Behold the wounds in Jesus' hands, look to your Lord and live. He earns to bless you with His love and all your sins forgive. Oh, empty is the heart of man when it is filled with tears. Come open wide your broken heart and let your Savior in. May that be your blessing every day, that He is in you through His Holy Spirit, as you are one with Him increasingly. God bless you. I feel at this moment His deep, deep love for you. I pray and bless you that you'll feel it too, more than ever before in these next days. I know He lives, and you are His, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen."